Good evening, welcome to Biggleswade Town Council. I'd like to inform everyone present that this meeting will be filmed and livestreamed to YouTube. By your presence, you're deemed to have consented to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings. Can I please request that when councillors and members of the public are speaking, not to disclose any personal information of an individual, as this might infringe the rights of that individual and breach data protection rules. This is a formal town council meeting and members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak during public open sessions, but will not be permitted to speak at other times. Thank you. We have apologies for absence from councillor Lesley Fage, councillor Mark Foster and councillor North, and councillor Grant Fage is running late, his train is late. Do I have any declarations of interest in any items on the agenda, please? No? Thank you. No, 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 just councillors. I'm delighted to say that the neighbourhood plan consultation ended yesterday. We have had 53 formal responses, including from statutory bodies like Historic England, the NHS and Central Bedfordshire. The Strategy Group is meeting tomorrow morning with Dave Checkman to consider the responses and to look at possible amendments depending on the issues raised. We haven't seen all the issues raised yet. I think there was quite a lot to collate. So then the neighbourhood plan will come back to council as quickly as possible, hopefully later this month, with the consultation statement and then it can be submitted to Central Beds if councillor approves. And then just to say that councillors Ramsay Bond, North and I attended a Diwali celebration at the Weatherley Centre on Saturday evening. It was great to see so many in traditional Indian dress and to learn more about the symbolisms of Diwali and to enjoy some exceptional Indian dancing. Thank you. Public open session, this is for members of the public to put questions or to address the council pertaining to matters listed on the agenda. Would members of the public like to speak? Could you indicate please? Could you come forward to one of those microphones? Councillor Ramsay, could you share the microphone?
I'm a resident of Drove Road and the proposed yellow lines will have a big impact on us and our neighbours as we're very short of parking at the moment and we don't believe that the roads, the traffic flows restricted in any way. That's the main point I'd like to make.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak? Come forward then, please.
Same topic. Some of you might have seen my post already on Facebook in answer to councillor Fage's. He alerted everybody to it. First of all, I don't know if the residents in Drove Road have actually received belief that drops through their letterboxes. I've only seen a notice on a lamp post and then the post that councillor Fage posted. But I live on the road that backs onto Drove Road, I live on Orchard Close and we've recently had double yellow lines extended around Hitchmead Road and Grosvenor Gardens, Orchard Close Junction to make it much safer. Therefore, that already reduces the on-street parking for anybody that needs it. So for me, it doesn't make any sense. Like gentleman over there sort of said, where are the residents going to park? They don't have any driveways, they don't have any alternative but to parking, on-street parking, which pushes it into the neighbouring roads of Hitchmead, Drove Road, et cetera. And there's potential that seven or eight vehicles, space for seven or eight vehicles would decide? Seven or eight vehicles on Drove Road at the moment is the amount of space we're talking about. So parking, as I said, has been reduced already in neighbouring roads and has CBC, I know it's their proposal, not the town councils, have they considered the knock-on effect into neighbouring roads? And just also to point out that we had great support with the yellow lines around the Orchard Close, Hitchmead Road, Grosvenor Gardens Junction from Steve Watkins, who was a great help in pushing that through, he liaised with me and a few of the residents. He came on as side visits and children coming into school in the morning, seeing the cars coming back and forth. It does get very busy and you notice the children walking in the road. We then have increased car parking. It makes it back into an unsafe road again. And potentially now that we've got the reduced double yellow lines, when everybody's at home, they're at maximum capacity for on-street parking. We also have the industrial unit on Hitchmead Road, where also members of staff have to park. And I bumped into one of my neighbours tonight, I mean, I'm in one of the first two houses on Orchard Close. My neighbour, who is the very first one, he said when he leaves for work in the morning, he can see people waiting to take his space. To then park up and walk to the train station, he has seen them walk into town. So we're actually already getting commuters, it's not just residents. Because of wider car parking problem, but that's not for today. So yeah, he's seen them wait even in the morning. And also, I don't know if you've noticed, but I'm aware of residents from the bulk, at the hot line end of the bulk, parking in that section of Drove Road. So there's already a domino effect before you even do away with those spaces. And so, yeah, the knock-on effect. Making sure I've captured everything my neighbours have asked me to say. Yeah, Orchard Close needs to keep on-street parking to a minimum because of access to the school and the Weatherley Centre, because it does get very, very busy. I don't know if anybody's users of the Weatherley Centre, but when you've got classes finishing, after-school groups finishing, it does get very busy and it can just be bobbing in and out. So, you know, it could get, you know, very congested and dangerous. And also to-ing and fro-ing in the morning when parents are dropping children off and also children are walking. So I think adding the yellow lines, I think is just compounding what is, I think is a little bit of a challenge at the moment anyway. I know it's beginning to settle down because I think our double yellow lines were extended maybe months, six weeks ago, I think like that. But also, I don't know if anybody knows, since in the area, the double yellow lines that are on the junction of Hitchmead and Drove Road, there are repeat offenders that park on those double yellows on a regular, regular basis. And one of my neighbours said to me last night, it's all very well, but if they're not enforced, people keep parking. And that does make, and I did actually see probably earlier in the summer, some traffic wardens, is that what they're still called these days? Park on that corner on double yellow lines in a Central Beds round, all branded up. And they parked on the double yellows and started dishing out tickets. It's the only time I've seen them, but it was the irony of them parking on double yellows themselves. But yeah, sorry, I thought. So I spoke to, I think, three of my neighbours, so I'm here on behalf of residents of Orchard Close.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We don't have an invited speaker. Do we have any members' questions? And then I'm on to the minutes of the meeting on the 12th of October. So for accuracy first, this is page one of the minutes. Page two. Councillor Fage.
Item 3B should be councillor G Fage, not just councillor Sage.
Thank you. You'll add the G. Especially since she works a hard planting trees. Anything else on page two? Page three. Councillor Strong?
No, sorry, I'm on page four.
Okay, well, I'm on page four now. Off you go.
Yes, item 9B, I don't recognise the road A00156. I don't think that is the correct road, whether it's 6156 or 15, A1556, but it certainly, I don't, I think the A00156, so that needs correcting. I think maybe B156 or something like that.
Okay, I don't know what it is, but we will check that. Councillor Pullinga?
I think that's the reference to the scheme, not the road number.
Thank you.
Okay. Right. Anything else on page four? Councillor Fage?
Yeah, I'm being a little pedantic, but seeing as these are supposed to be a proper record. Item 9B, we don't have the authority to approve the waiting restrictions, we simply supported them, I think. So I think we just need that clarification. Wouldn't want somebody who's reading the, you know, if this were not to go ahead, for example, someone reading our minutes might come back and say, well, town council said yes, but it shouldn't actually sit with us, so perhaps we could change that word.
So it needs to say the town council agreed the proposed waiting restrictions. Yeah. Okay, that can be changed. Anything on page five, colleagues? Councillor Strong?
Yes, the bottom of 9B, it was all under Financial Regulation 111A7 to not apply. Why not not to apply? It just reads grammatically, it looks awful.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on page five? Page six? Page seven. Councillor Strong?
Yes, the final paragraph, the bottom of the page, I made reference to doctors and nurses, not doctors and nurse-aries. There may be a shortage of nurse-aries, but I was thinking particularly the lack of nurses.
Thank you very much. We're having fun tonight, aren't we? Anything on page eight? Okay. I'll take the next set of minutes for accuracy. And then we'll go back to matters arising. So these are the minutes of the 26th of October. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Councillor Fage?
Yep, this might be my memory, perhaps someone could just correct me, but item 15B under exempt. So it was resolved that the realtors booking facility be implemented. Were we so specific as to name something? We were?
Yes.
We were, were we?
It's our existing accounting system.
Is it? Okay, I beg your pardon, that is my, that is my poor memory. Apologies. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going back to, if I can find the right place. I'm going back to the minutes of the 12th of October and this time for any matters arising. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Or page eight. Okay. So then the minutes of the 26th of October. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. So no matters arising on either set of minutes. So items for consideration and we're on to the proposed waiting restrictions. And Central Beds have put a lot of different restrictions together, so there's quite a bit to go through. So I'm going to take them individually. So the first one is Drove Road, east side. Councillor Thomas and then councillor Woodhead.
Okay. I too like the two residents of the local area, can't understand why they're taking a few parking spaces away. There's nowhere else for these people to park at all. They can't use their drives, there isn't enough space. So it's, as the lady says, it's only going to push the problem further out. There needs to be a different solution. I don't see what they're trying to, CBC are trying to solve. So I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Thank you. Councillor Woodhead?
Thank you. Also, like councillor Thomas, I'm opposed to the restrictions on Drove Road. I can't see really see the logic behind it. Many of the properties on that street, as we know, are Victorian or slightly newer and don't have driveways already, they're much older. And it's going to also push the, sorry, push the parking problem elsewhere in town. There's also the bus stops located on that stretch of the road as well, I guess, which will have to be looked at as to where that may, that may go, either further up or further down. And I think the broader point I wanted to raise about the whole parking restrictions is whether the whole town has been looked at holistically, because it seems to be a very piecemeal, very bitty kind of approach. And while the Drove Road aspects we're not very happy about, it would be better if Central Beds had looked at the problem in the round rather than this very kind of drip feed approach. So I think that's what's quite disappointing about all of this, they've just been shoved through without any kind of broader consideration of parking across the town. But yeah, I think Drove Road's not a good plan. Thank you.
I've got councillor Albin, councillor Brown and then councillor Strong.
Yeah, absolutely agree. The residents there do not have alternative. And there is no problem. There's no problem to fix. It's a solution looking for a problem. So I think we should simply object to this, it's not necessary and it will cause residents there great hardship. Simply object.
Do I have a second for that proposal? Thank you, I have. So now councillor Brown and councillor Strong, please.
I can understand why they've put that proposal there. Sorry. If you're coming down the bulk and you're turning left, then cars park there, you're immediately forced onto oncoming traffic. Now, I don't live around there, so I don't know if that is a problem or has ever been a problem. But if it's anything like the Fairfield Estate, it is a problem, but that's why they've put it there, for cars turning left. If there is a car parked on the yellow lines or where the yellow lines are proposed, traffic has to pull out and you're driving into oncoming traffic.
I think I agree that we should be objecting to this, but I think we need to put the reasons on. I could see actually no logic to the proposal. When I looked at it, it's such a small area and with all the other piecemeal development that's been, or restrictions have been going on, it's not a holistic approach. I think we should actually pad it up and explain why we're objecting. It's because it's a loss of residents' parking spaces and it's just moving a problem from one place to another. And if there's any other valid objections, I think the more weight we put behind it, just objecting doesn't do anything. We've got to explain a rationale to it.
Yeah, so I think councillor Strong is right. So councillor Albin has said we should object, that's been seconded. So I think the language is something along the lines of, we're losing residents' parking spaces. They will have no alternative other than to go and park their cars, particularly on the bulk and on Hitchmead Road, which are already roads which are under considerable strain from on-street parking. So to my mind, I think that the idea of moving it, moving the problem from one place to another is probably the language that we need to get in there. Perhaps some, an interesting piece of evidence, I looked up on Crashmap, which has records of where there have been traffic incidents or collisions over the last, it goes back about 12 years. I had a look over the last five years, there's been one minor incident on the bulk Drove Road junction. So I suspect what councillor Brown is saying is right, that the logic here of highways engineers or whoever it is, is that a car coming north to south along Drove Road will have to steer out, which could harm those vehicles coming up the bulk. But the evidence isn't there that there's any kind of actual problem backed up by evidence. So perhaps we could sneak that in as well.
Yes, I also agree with councillor Strong. But you know, the fact is, we're making valid points about this. This is not a done deal. This all goes to traffic management, it gets delegated by the chairman of traffic management will make a decision on it based on representation. So I'd also suggest that people who actually have reasons for it should also, when it comes to traffic management, try, if it's possible, to try and turn up there and actually discuss it with the chairman, who is always very amenable to these things. So officers will have to justify their reasons why they're doing this. So I think, you know, a lot of valid points have been made around here as to, is it justified? Obviously, officers think it is justified and it will be a decision made by traffic management. So I think, you know, it's a fair thing, rather than just objecting to it, objecting to say, look, it doesn't seem to be justified.
So I'm quite happy to object to this one. Just a couple of points that I would like to make. I mean, I think as a general point, that the reason for all of these proposals is quite thin in terms of why specifically they are needed. I mean, it's a very, very open reason, really. In this specific case, it appears that it might also be linked to actually the bus stop and actually be, when buses stop there, if there's parked cars, that completely blocks up the road. So if that was the case, then would it not be more appropriate to actually have it as a designated bus stop with temporary restrictions for the hours of service rather than a at-any-time restriction? But that was, that was my thought.
Yeah, just to say, as I, as I, as I moved the objection, I'm quite happy to take, take on board what councillor Fage put forward as a reason for objection. I'm still not seeing that it's necessary in any way.
Thank you. So I strongly support the objection and I hope it's a strong objection. I just wanted to make the observation really that I think a number of these proposals are really a failure of integrated planning policy. Because what seems to be going on here is we've allowed relatively uncontrolled development around the perimeter of the town. And now there's a proposal to deprive people in houses that have no off-street parking of parking because of the uncontrolled development around the town. And I think what really needs to happen is we need to start thinking about how we're going to make sure the old roads, the old parts of the centre of our historical town will work as we expand the town. And that's clearly what hasn't been happening and I think that's what's led to ill-cc see poorly thought out proposals like this.
Yeah, just a brief point of detail in terms of a Drove Road bulk junction. There is actually a huge build-out, a road that goes on the edge of the bulk, which if anything, probably would cause more of a problem that councillor Brown was referring to, rather than the parking. Because actually you'd have to go all the way around. So if there's oncoming traffic, it's actually, if anything, the build-out would need to be reduced, although that's not in the scope of this thing, but to make it safer. So actually the build-out plus the WL lines would make it worse, but so, you know, pushing, pushing traffic elsewhere. So it was just pointed out that there are sort of traffic measures there already that aren't sort of working. So it all needs to be taken into consideration, but so the WLs is not the way forward.
Sorry, it's just that there's a lot of interference all the while and I turned that off and then forgot that I hadn't turned it back on, so I'm sorry. So I will say again for the benefit of the recording, that we're strongly objecting on the grounds of the loss of residents' parking, the knock-on effect on nearby streets and the fact that the build-out causes a problem and needs to be reduced. So all those in favour of objecting on those grounds, please? I think that's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, so we now have Rose. I'm sorry, but you're not allowed to speak at this point. No, I'm sorry, yeah, you can talk to councillor Bond afterwards. Rose Lane, any comments please on Rose Lane? Councillor Albin?
I can see that there's more of an issue here from a traffic point of view. But this is obviously going to lead to a loss of spaces. And those spaces we thought were important when the Sun Street restrictions were put in in the one-way system there. So there's a loss of parking generally in that area, which is necessary, I think. So I can see that there is more of a need for it than the, for instance, the Drove Road, but it's, it's not that bad. And it's a general loss of parking spaces in that particular area is going to hit heavily on residents. So I would like to object to this one as well.
Because of the loss of parking? Yeah, where there's very little off-street parking. So councillor Strong and then councillor Knight.
I'd happily second that if that was a proposal. I see no logic for this again, because it's a one-way street, it's not as though it's two-way traffic. Therefore, it is wide enough to have the parking without, I believe, any detrimental effect whatsoever on the free flow of traffic or safety.
Thank you, councillor Knight.
Yeah, so I think there are traffic challenges there, but I'm unconvinced by the proposal to remove three or four parking spaces. And I think if we do that, it's likely that in one or two years' time, there'll be a proposal to put speed cushions in to try and calm the traffic and slow it down again. So I think rather than introduce completely pointless speed cushions, it's better to keep the parking, which is a natural way to help to control the speed of traffic in that area.
Thank you, councillor Fage.
Yeah, I'm happy to go with what colleagues say, of course, but just in terms of the logic. My understanding is that the reason that they want to remove the parking there is because you have two lanes. And in order to turn right into some street, you have to be in the right-hand lane. But if you want to go straight on across past Rose Lane Car Park towards Asda, you have to be in the left-hand lane. And apparently what's been happening, I don't know what evidence there is for this, but it's cars jockeying for position in order to get into that left-hand lane when they are in the right-hand lane to turn into some street. And the idea is that the removal of that parking will make it easier for cars to move across or move between lanes. But like I say, I won't pass comment on this because I live on Rose Lane, other than to provide that comment.
Thank you. Councillor Foster?
Yep, I hear what councillor Fage has to say. I use that stretch of road virtually every day and it's not a problem, honestly. Really not a problem.
Okay, so we have a proposal to object on the grounds of loss of parking where there's very little off-street parking. All those in favour, please? Thank you. Yes, I think that's unanimous. I'm now on to Chambers Way. Now, this one is different and I think somebody might need to say something about this, councillor Foster.
Yes, I definitely would. As you know, I've long been in favour of having a mini roundabout on London Road opposite Chambers Way for reasons which completely escape me. CBC don't seem to think it's possible. I don't understand why it's not possible. What certainly is possible is to have to double yellow lines so that as you approach London Road, you don't have to go into the middle of the road. It's just ridiculous at the moment, that situation. So yes, I entirely approve of what's suggested here and it should have been done a long time ago. But it's a great shame that a mini roundabout can't be placed in that area.
Thank you. And I remember very well you bringing it to council several years ago and we did write to Central Beds then. Councillor Ramsay?
It was last year I was able to talk to a Central Beds councillor and I asked, this is such an obvious thing, why hadn't it been done? And it was put to me that they were concentrating more on the junction of Eagle Road. And it would appear that whatever they're going to do at Eagle Road, roundabout, whatever, is going to take priority over what's happening in Chambers Way. I didn't fully understand it either, but I understand at this point it was either Chambers Way or Eagle Farm Road. And Eagle Farm Road has seemed to be more urgent. I haven't seen any details since, but that's what I'm told.
Okay. Well, we've got no proposal for Eagle Farm Road, London Road junction anyway at the moment. But we do have this proposal, which is very necessary. And like you, councillor Foster, I use that a lot. And I'm very, very careful turning left off of London Road because you've very often got a car straight in front of you on your side of the road. Sorry, councillor Fage.
So I was just going to propose that we strongly support this then, because, you know, this is a good thing. Yes, it may have taken a little longer than we'd have liked, maybe there'd be other things as well. But in terms of the proposal that's in front of us, this is really, really good. So I'd like to propose that we strongly support this one. And let's leave it at strongly support, but that's a positive enough statement.
Okay, and councillor Foster seconded that. So all those in favour of strongly supporting this proposal? I think that's unanimous again. Thank you. We've covered all three chambers ways, I think, on that one, because they're all on the same diagram. So have a sec close. Any comments, please? Councillor Pullinga?
Yeah, this one confuses me completely as to why we would, they would ever suggest doing WL lines at the end of a cul-de-sac like this. And from what I can see, a large portion of the area that they're proposing to put the yellow lines are in fact dropped. And from what I can see, a large portion of the area that they're proposing to put the yellow lines are in fact drop curbs in any case. And those areas that are not look like reasonable parking places for, for that sort of cul-de-sac. So I really don't understand the logic of this one and so I don't think we should support it.
I think the logic might be that people park there to go to the station. You can walk through onto Hitting Street and then through the back streets to the station very quickly. And I know that there are residents on that particular estate who have been complaining about commuter parking for a long while. Councillor Knight, you're indicating?
I think I'm just going to really agree with councillor Pullinger and propose that we object to this, to my mind. Yes, it feels like it's completely disproportionate. It's a long way to the station from there and there are many other places where you can park closer. But frankly, is there a problem with commuters parking in a residential street? If they're not causing a hazard, I don't think they are. I went to have a look today and there weren't many cars there at all. So I think this is completely disproportionate.
So councillor Knight's proposed that we object. Do I have a second for that councillor Pullinger? Okay, councillor Strong is next.
Yes, I suspect the logic for it is that it's blocking a turning circle area. And I think that is the reason why in a residential area, and if you have parking there, I think it will possibly be detrimental. If the residents object to the double yellow lines and it makes, people parking there may stop and getting into their own properties. They should approach the central beds council and say reject. But I think it is, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate on this particular instance. It is not a major traffic hazard that it's being put there to protect. I think it's an unnecessary invasion of the liberties in that particular area. And I think that if it stops, if there is commuter parking down there, it can only be a good thing. So I'm, I'm not going to object to this.
Councillor Pullinger?
Just in response to that, the, the actual turning circle area, as I said before, is mainly dropped curbs and there isn't, unless people are actually blocking people's driveways to park, then they wouldn't be blocking the, the turning circle.
Councillor Ramsay then councillor Fage.
Could we, are we able at this point to suggest a compromise and just say that no parking between nine and 10 or between 10 and 12? It stops people staying there all day and it would only be an hour, which is what they've done round, I think, down the corner from here. Are we allowed to suggest that? Because I can see the problems, but to stop them parking there all day, you really only need to have an hour in the day when it's not allowed.
Okay councillor Fage.
So a number of residents who, who live down here have been in touch about this one. So I have it on good authority that there are some tensions between some people who live in some properties on that street and others who live in, in other properties. And I'm not going to say who is necessarily right or wrong. I don't know, I don't know the full history of it. But I, I do understand that a lot of the people who live in the, the cluster houses only have one parking space per property. And there's occasionally some spillover elsewhere onto other parts of the street. I, I don't know the history of it, but it's, it's pretty clear to me that a lot of those residents are very worried about losing what looked like reasonably legitimate parking spaces for a cul-de-sac. I, I grew up on a cul-de-sac, people, people park in some of the empty spaces, as councillor said, councillor Pullinger said. I'm not sure it's necessarily about the turning circle in this case. So to my mind, I'll, I'll very happily be voting to, to object to this one.
Okay, so we have a proposal to object. Do we want to add to the proposal that alternatives should be looked for? No? Okay, so straightforward objection to this proposal, all those in favour, please? Thank you, that's carried. We then got Kaitland's Road. Councillor Pullinger?
I would just propose that we support this one. I think on balance, it's a loss of one parking space immediately outside number 23. The rest of it is already a drop curb in any case.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favour of supporting this? Thank you very much. That's carried. And the final on the Fairfield Road. Councillor Brown?
I'm strongly in favour of this. And in fact, before the meeting, I was going to suggest it needed more, but it's been explained to me why this is being proposed. It is highly dangerous for many of the residents on this state coming down. You're forced into a one-way, meeting the one-way traffic coming the opposite way. And it has led to blockages where people take quite a while backing up, trying to find, create an avenue for people to, to travel down. So I'm strongly in favour of this.
Is that seconded, please? Thank you. Councillor Bond, did you want to speak?
Well, this has been on the cards for a long time, but I can understand, I live in the same area as councillor Brown. And it is a real problem because it's a blind bend. So you, because you've got vehicles parked, the problem is you end up having to be on the wrong side of the road. And then you're, you're then facing vehicles who can't see you as they come around the bend. I have been in a situation a couple of times when it's been very close and someone's come too fast round and they can't see the road. This is, this is all added to the proposal, which is going to be a pavement as well in the same area. All added together, it means that it'll be a much better exit from the sports ground and it'll make it a lot safer. Yes, I am very much in favour of this and it's been long overdue and it's, I must thank full city officers for actually proposing this.
Thank you councillor Knight and councillor Pullinger.
Thank you. So I'm also strongly in favour of this on the grounds of safety and agree with the points that have been made. I do have a slight concern around the sort of knock-on impact and where people will park who were parking there will now park. I wonder whether there's any opportunity to look at whether some of the cars that park there are associated with events taking place like cricket and football or whether there's any scope to provide more off-street parking in that area and whether that's something we should look at given the land we have in that area.
Thank you councillor Pullinger.
I also strongly support this. I, I use this more as a pedestrian than as a driver when I've been there and walking down towards the railway, down the Bridleway. And, and particularly around that junction, it is rather hazardous with the parked cars and trying to cross over with being no pavement on that side. And I'm especially heartened to hear from councillor Bond that there, there is a proposal hopefully coming to put pavement in there as well. But yeah, strongly support this.
Okay, so the proposal is to strongly support, all those in favour, please? Unanimous again, thank you. Councillor Albin?
Before we leave that, I think some of these, I've certainly, and other people have struggled to see the logic of some of the proposals. So I wonder if we could get in touch with whatever department is, is involved. And say, the next time we receive these kind of consultations, can we have a little bit more background? Because it would help us in, in coming to a decision.
Something that was mentioned earlier was the fact that residents who are concerned haven't necessarily been properly leafletted, properly told about this. So perhaps we could make both of those points to central beds if council's happy? Okay. Okay, thank you. So I'm moving on to planning applications. And the first one is three Tate Drive loft conversion. Comments please colleagues? Subject to neighbours, I've been told, are we all happy with that? Right. And three Dell's Lane works to trees protected by a TPO. Noted? Thank you. And then we've got items for information, footpath number 24, temporary closure. Any comments please councillor Albin?
Yeah, I was talking about logic. I don't understand the reason for, for this. It's to put a fence in place, a boundary, a boundary wall in place. So I, I don't really see, I don't understand why we need to close a footpath in order to do that. It's a well-used footpath, it's used a lot by children going to Stran School and many others as well. It's, it's always, if you walk down there, there's always other people on it. So it is obviously well-used. I walked down there yesterday, as, as it happens, and noted that they actually cut the grass down there, which was impeding a lot of, a lot of the way anyway. But yeah, I don't understand why you need to shut that footpath to build a fence. It may be that it's, it's more convenient for the developers to do that, but it's certainly not convenient for, for the public. So I'm not quite sure what we can do with this as it's a matter for information. But I, I, I would like to see it challenged as to why it's necessary.
Well, it's an item for information, but I don't see why we can't write to central beds and say we feel that this was unnecessary. What about Bridleway number 58, temporary closure? Any comments there? Councillor Foster?
I'd just like to add a point on this footpath 24, that even with my CapriX removed and my new glasses, I still can't see a key as to what the red line means, what the green line means. I think if they're going to give us a map, they should at least give us a key to what those mean. It seems a bit sloppy.
Okay. Councillor Albin?
Footpath 24 again. I think they've got the footpath wrong. Well, it, it's still showing as, as crossing diagonally across Eagle Farm Recreation Ground. Now, that was moved or is leased in the process of being moved a while ago. So I think the map's wrong. So I think that perhaps should be brought to attention. But, but the, the part that is, is needing to be closed is between A and E. So the dotted line is the alternative route, I think.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a bit more to note about footpath 24. Anything on Bridleway 58? So I'm moving on to item 12, accounts, councillor Pullinger?
Thank you. So I propose that we accept and adopt the financial administration reports as detailed in the agenda.
Is that seconded, please? Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Public open session. Councillor Bond, do you want to tell the members of the public about traffic management, please?
Diary, like councillor Fage actually put in chat with me, so we can have a discussion about Drove Road while we're on. So that all things are factual. But no, it's not a problem, it's a very relaxed and very informal meeting.
Do the members of the public wish to say anything else? No? Thank you. Okay. There are no exempt items, so I am happy to declare the meeting closed. Thank you colleagues.